And the council members could, it was about six or seven, so good luck. Yeah. Four?
Steve.
I'll read the resolution. Resolution of congratulations to the winners of Mr. and Mrs., Mr. and Miss. Whereas Bellevue High School holds the distinction of being the first to implement this unprecedented concept in a local school district for which Bellevue is uniquely proud of the development of a celebrated scholarship program, and whereas with the addition of the official issue platform, the students may now become spokespeople for meaningful issues and causes. These students may not become activists in today's world as all good role models need to be, and whereas the Mr. and Miss Bellevue Pageant Program production provides these students the opportunity to hone their life skills in public speaking, poise, confidence, persistence, and commitment, and whereas this program will prepare these students for the real world and to afford them the opportunity to make a significant difference to society. Now therefore be resolved that the Mayor and Municipal Council do hereby congratulate the 2014 Mr. and Miss Bellevue, Mr. PJ Cencarelli, and Miss Andrea Lindsay. Furthermore, the Mayor and Municipal Council do hereby congratulate the 215 Mr. and Miss Bellevue, Mr. Christine Ferran, and Miss Aleah Butler. Now, here we go.
Manu, Steve.
I also have declarations from State Senator Wess, who is out of the country, I believe. She just sent them to us to hand out, so even when we see them at the same time.
Congratulations.
So you know if PJ is not here, he's in Italy.
PJ is in Italy, yes.
You know what, we'll just go like this, and if you have to.
And Alia is on her way.
Are you gonna accept this for PJ?
I'm sorry.
Are you gonna accept it for PJ?
Yes, I would like to.
Come on up.
It's all over deck. And you do know that in the hallway is PJ harvesting.
Of course, that's right. Yeah, the same congratulations.
He's just a little taller.
Of that nature.
Let me get on the slide, so we can, so we can.
Shereen is still. This is last year's.
Come on, come close, come on, Garrett.
Come on, Vinnie, come on.
Everybody in.
Let's make sure that you're walking the right one.
I don't.
All the same.
I'd just like to say, I did not attend the first Mr. and Miss Bellevue, but I did see them. I did attend the second, the 2015, and I have never seen such a beautiful way it was done. And it was like you were in Atlantic City, you know, choosing, you know. So I congratulate you too. And where's Mr. Cencarelli, is he here?
He's in Italy.
Okay.
And Lee is on her way.
Oh, okay. And I want to, I'm thrilled to put out of you children. And it's like they're visiting, you know, this Atlantic City and going all over, and you're just role models for the whole town. Like, you're beautiful.
I just wanted to congratulate them, you know, best of luck, and, you know, are you good?
I would like to, I would like to recognize Mr. Gary Politano, who sort of gave birth to this. Gary is a future Bellevue High School, teaches English, he also taught cosmetology. He has a great resume of being involved in this America pageant, and live TV production, and all that kind of stuff. And like the councilwoman said, if you get the opportunity this year in April to come see the show, first of all, get there early, because we have about 850 seats in that auditorium, and they were all taken this year. And it's an exciting, exciting event. It's done, like Marie said, just like on TV, but it's his brainchild, and he's pulled it off spectacularly. I'd also like to recognize Francine Persirtia. Great team, and her first charity foundation in honor of her mom and dad and brother, and of course herself representing the foundation, our major scholarship donor for the event. And to those who participated, first of all, these two folks are the perfect representation, two handsome and lovely young man and young woman, who went through a very rigorous process in order to win this thing. And it is just, they had, we saw them in three hundred, boy, they got recognized, and they just give Bellevue the greatest pride when they go out and do their thing under Gary's leadership. So congratulations to you all, and we're gonna look forward to a great year this year. Yeah, these are great kids, I saw their resumes and everything, and they really deserve it. And I know Gary for a few years now, I know, he really works hard to get this done, and it's a great, great, great day. Thank you, Gary. Yeah, number one, thank you for everything you do for these kids, I know you've been doing for years. He's one of the unsung heroes of the school system. I wanna congratulate you guys, and thank you for being such great representatives of what we are as a town, so God bless you, good luck in school.
Thank you very much.
Does he have anything to say?
Speak, speak.
Yeah, sure. I'd like to thank Mr. Politano and Mrs. Persirtia definitely for starting this whole thing and getting this off the ground. They definitely go above and beyond, like Councilman Bell said. They do a great job, and he's definitely an unsung hero. I'd also like to thank everybody here for recognizing this and just making this just a wonderful year and a wonderful experience. Thank you.
I'd like to thank everyone here today honoring me and honoring Christian and everyone, Mr. and other Mr. and Miss Belvilles down here, oh, it's actually, oh, it's now, Aleah. And I know for sure that they represent the town of Bellevue in the most beautiful way, spectacular way. And everyone respects them, and they show, they have already given money to Autism Awareness, which I think is phenomenal. They're raising the bar, and I know they'll raise it every year, and I can't wait to come back to Bellevue and see everything that has grown since I was there. And I would like to thank the councilmen and the mayor for honoring me today, and it's a great thing. And I would like to also thank Mr. Gary Politano. I don't think, I'm not sure I can imagine it, it would get this big, but it did, and I'm honored, and my family's honored, and thank you very much.
You know, it's an honor to have students like this that participate in school activities and show everybody else what Bellevue's all about. Nothing negative, but all the positive things that are happening in the school system. So congratulations. Good luck in your future.
First of all, I would like to thank my mom for supporting me through everything and getting me here today, even though we got a little lost. Second of all, I would like to thank Mr. Politano for having this amazing program, this amazing pageant. I don't think that he really expected all of this to happen, it had just snowballed, but I'm really excited to see this program grow, and hopefully want it spread to other school districts and other towns, and have them have this amazing opportunity that I had. I know PJ couldn't be here today, but I would also like to thank PJ and Andrea for all this amazing advice that they have given me on how to go through my reign, and I really look up to them and hope that I can make them proud. And lastly, I want to thank Christian for being one of my closest friends and always supporting me through everything. And yeah, I'm really looking forward to the rest of this year with you.
Can Mr. Politano just say a couple of words?
Of course, sure, yeah.
I don't need mine.
We want you to stay in the middle, get the whole effect. Listen, listen, can you hear?
Yes. I just don't wanna turn my back on you.
Stage left.
Uh, stage left. Um, I, um, no, I did not expect this to snowball the way it has, and it certainly is getting bigger and bigger and bigger. Two things I would like to drive home is that, number one, this year we added the platform, so each contestant needs to come to the table with a foundation or a, some sort of, some sort of a group that they're gonna represent and that they are going to raise money for and that they are gonna speak of during their reign. Christian's happens to be Autism Awareness, and Aleah's happens to be the Dove Foundation for.
Young women's.
Young women's self-esteem project. And she will be working through Mrs. Kranti and the school with middle school girls who are, we all know middle school girls, are all questioning their self-esteem issues. The second thing is something that, I'd like to echo something that Andrea said. There will be a meeting with people from Lynnhurst before the summer's over. I was on the phone with Wes Dorange when I was out in the hallway, and I have a very good connection, family connection, with the president of the Board of Education with Cliffside Park. Our superintendent has already said, if there are ten school districts interested in following the formulation and crowning winners, that we will have the state pageant in Bellevue. That means Fran, I forgot about you too. Thank you so much, everyone, for recognizing these kids. They worked very, very, very hard. And just so that the public knows, the process that they go through is an inclusive nine-minute interview with a corporate panel of judges. The one rule, the umbrella rule with this pageant is, if a judge could find Bellevue on the map, they are not allowed to sit on the pageant. They have to be out of Bellevue, they have to, they have to punch it into their GPS in order to get there, so that there's no question that these, that these children were chosen without bias. The panel was a corporate panel from big business, and they sit in a nine-minute interview. They talk about their futures, their college aspirations, and their platforms. Then we switch over, and onstage they compete in activewear, formal wear, and they have an onstage question dealing with their platform, and that is another panel of celebrity judges that comes in. I will tell you, and I've interviewed for dozens and dozens and dozens of jobs in my lifetime, especially as the years I spent as a freelancer, I would not have gone up against the five corporate judges these kids went up against in the interview. So I give them a lot of credit, I really do.
Aleah and Christian did come to our Civic Association dance, and I just wanna say that Christian Ferran danced every single dance.
Well, Marie, I'm sorry, we're not putting a talent competition.
Parents of these children, congratulations.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, and now I have to get over my meeting.
Yes, thank you.
If anybody wants to leave or they wanna stay, see government in action, you could stay, but I will give you the opportunity to leave now if you wish. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Nice sleep done, kids.
You got one brown paw in there, let me tell you.
He's gonna get a pretty much excited.
Paving continues throughout the municipality. The paver started on Jerralyn Street yesterday with the building in. The paving will continue to complete that project on Friday of this week, weather permitting. They don't anticipate work tomorrow if it is going to rain, but they assure me that they should be completed by Friday of the paver. After that, they'll move back over and complete the water sussing next. Generator at the senior building is almost completed. Last work was hooking up the gas, which was scheduled for tomorrow. No, nothing else to do.
A couple of things. Kevin, I received a letter, I think Vinnie got one, and Steve and me, about, it was Michael Mastronzi, and said he's living in Bellevue for over a year, started to raise a family, and he has questions on the rent control in Bellevue, what does the law allow, what does it not allow? So could someone get back to him and explain this to them, please? On the revenue board? Okay, here's the letter.
Marie, I wrote him an email.
Did you?
On the weekend.
All right. Also, Cedar Hill Avenue. Mine were the Cedar Hill Avenue, but Mayor Street is not mine, that's Mr. Cosarelli's. And we got some bad publicity in the paper that we didn't like, at least I know I didn't like it.
Who's on the text, please stop it.
I think that's, that's a low battery signal.
A low battery?
Yeah, low battery.
All right.
And I think what we need to do, the Cedar Hill Avenue is mine word, and the Mayor Street is Vinnie's word, I only have one block. And they sent pictures of how the street is and the curves, and it is a wreck. So if, you know, if you wanna take some of the money out of the first work to help them out there, I don't care, but it needs to be done.
Just so you know, that letter came through, besides sending photographs to the local paper, they also wrote a letter to the mayor and councilmen.
I know, I saw that.
I responded as soon as I received a copy of the letter, and I spoke with the resident who wrote the letter. I immediately dispatched the municipal engineer to go out there and assess the conditions of the street, and I'm awaiting his report. I should have received his report. There may be an opportunity to get that project done this year, maybe.
That would be nice, because, you know, they're just going on and on and on, and it needs to be, you know, done. Okay, also, what's going on with the Civic Lake Firehouse?
We are in a difficult situation with that. We understand that there is no asbestos in the building. We did have an architect out to look at the building, but the proposal to write the design specs was extremely costly, extremely costly. So I'm exploring opportunities of having other architects prepare proposals for us.
Okay, that would be good, you know, 'cause we need to start doing something.
Absolutely.
Okay, that's it.
Kevin, I know, I know that we have spoken about this a lot, but this is the one thing that really, really bothers me. Houses that, houses or properties that are reported because of violations with codes. And I wanna ask you, because a lot of the people that do call me, they don't know the procedure and what's getting done, all they know is that it's still there, and they think that I'm not doing my job, and as you know, I do report all the time. For instance, we have a house, as you know, we've talked about, with boats on their property. The house on Greavon with no steps. A three family that I just reported to, the other day, on Union Avenue, illegal three family. Now, this is my understanding, the inspectors go out, they have to have X amount of days to clean up. How many days, ten days?
I believe it's ten days.
Ten days to clean up. Now, if they don't clean up, and in many of the cases they don't, if they don't clean up, then they have to get a notice that they have to appear in court, is that correct?
The second trip would become a violation situation, summons would be issued, and they have to go into court.
Okay, now, what I do hear is that many of them don't show up to court. If that's the case, then what do we do? How do we fix this?
Well, one way is to issue a bench warrant, which sometimes happens, okay, and then it's difficult to locate a homeowner who is in foreclosure. The purpose of the ordinance that was crafted and went through second reading on G29 was to give code enforcement more enforcement opportunities, and also the law department and code enforcement the ability to track down these abandoned property owners, and with the hopes of, if it's, if it's someone who's totally vacated and totally abandoned the house, then we have the ability to go after the lender. That new piece of business that you proved at the last meeting allows some significant fines on a daily basis to the lenders. So when the lenders get notice of daily fines, chances are they're going to be inclined to get a company out there to restore the property, at least at the minimum conditions prior to marketing the property. They see that happen all across the state when those fines are levied. So it's a wonderful thing that that ordinance was approved. There is a period in time, as you know, that we have to go through, the twenty day period after that, and then we can begin the enforcement action.
And what about, what about the clean to lean?
Clean to lean, we have been, we have been doing. It's unfortunate that in the summer months with some vacations taking place, a lot of the resources have been heavily concentrated on our public properties, but I've been assured that, you know, they'll, they'll get back out there to clean the leans. I've also contacted another municipality locally who does employ outside resources to do the clean to lean work. So what some other towns have done was they've gone out to bid, and they've received proposals from private landscaping firms to do that type of work. The only problem that there becomes, right now we have employees that we pay to do the work. If we do it outside company, we have to find the resources to meet those obligations.
Now, how far can we go with a clean to lean? Could we remove, for instance, I'm gonna say this, could we remove boats, you know, if a person is ignoring this?
That's a difficult situation, and we had that similar problem at 264 Greylock, where the chief of police contacted the prosecutor's office, and they instructed me not to touch the vehicles on the property. Some of the cars on the property were older cars, and we were fearful that if we did remove them, we would inherit the potential claim against the municipality for doing damage to what someone could argue was an antique or a collection.
I think right now, and there were several cars there at one time, I think right now there's one car that remains there. But see, what you just said, and in all fairness to the people that do report it all, they don't understand, you know, the procedure involved here, and all they know is, and again, they're not wrong, all they know is that I'm following what I'm supposed to do, and the guy across the street isn't. So, you know, one guy said to me, well, if he doesn't have steps, then why should I take a permit to do my driveway?
Direct them to contact my office, and I'd be happy to address that call for you or expand upon it. The reality there is that the homeowner who doesn't address it and is responsible living in their home will be subject to penalties and fines versus the property that may go into foreclosure. The bank will eventually settle up on all these malinquencies, but that could be two to three years down the road. The homeowner who's residing in the home shouldn't wanna put their house in jeopardy in that, in that fashion, in my opinion.
But I know that, you know, I get on this a lot, and I, we talked a lot about, but this is the one thing that really, really bothers me, because I, you know, because I believe in quality of life. People that are paying their taxes and that are abiding by the codes deserve quality of life, and it really, really bothers me when I go around and I see what I do see.
I agree wholeheartedly, and I think that exercise that we went through to get that additional ordinance on the books will certainly give us more enforcement action and the ability to go after the lenders who are not taking care of these abandoned homes.
And there's a lot of that that goes on, not only in Fort Worth, but throughout the country.
It's throughout the country. Unfortunately, with the mortgage crisis that blew up in 2008, it's a nationwide problem. People bought homes at the peak of the market in 2006 and overextended themselves, and now many of these homes are underwater. It's a common problem throughout the nation, not just here in Bellevue, unfortunately.
Yeah, I just wanna echo what Councilman.
Excuse me, point of order, other mics on? John, you could hardly be heard, I don't think your mic is on, no.
Can you hear?
No, it's not.
Actually, it's not.
Can you please put them on, because it's like private conversation up there.
All right, Kevin, yeah, I just wanted to echo what Councilman Tari said. Can we set up a meeting with all the departments involved in that, like the chief of police, health department, co-enforcement, so that they're all aware of the new ordinance? And we can all be on the same page with that? And whatever, you know, councilman or president could be there?
Sure.
That would be interesting.
That's it, Steve.
Two quick things, Kevin. I would just appreciate if we make sure that this contractor, whoever's scarifying the roads, make sure when they leave a scarifier out there, they put lights on it, because it was, it was like sitting in the middle of Jerralyn, right around the curve, it was so dangerous, it was ridiculous.
Well, side street.
Yeah, get it, get it off, get it off Jerralyn.
The problem with putting it on the side street, Councilman, is that.
Can't pass it.
Well, no, it's, the way of the machinery does damage to the side street. So if they do put it on the side street, it would be a street that would be.
Just light it up.
Well, once I receive the call from you on Sunday, I make sure that they dispatch someone Sunday.
And how we make out with the lights on Washington Avenue?
Progression is taking place. They're currently north of Runkers Street, and the transition will continue right up until Greylock, and then they'll turn around and start all the way down back to Mill Street.
How's PS's response been on that, as well as other lights in the town? Like, you hear that lights are out and?
Well, there are different crews that are working on the project itself. There is a web portal that we can go to to report power, you know, the streetlights that are out, but the crew that is working on installation of the new lampposts are on schedule, and they feel that they will complete the project timely.
Speaking of that website, do we have that link on our website?
We do.
Okay, good, so we can report, we can report off our website, that's good for everybody to know. Thank you.
Communications.
And a request received from the Bellevue High School Boys Soccer Association for permission to tag at various businesses. Our meeting is during months of July, August, September, October, and November 2015.
May I motion for approval?
Councilmember Cosmally, Kennedy, Longo, Natori, Robel, Trumel Burke, Mayor Timble. The letter of resignation from the Board of Adjustment and Historic Preservation Commission effective July 10, 2015, received from Jeffrey Beasley.
May I motion accepted?
Second.
Councilmember Cosmally, Kennedy, Longo, Natori, Robel, Trumel Burke, Mayor Timble. See, request received from Nelson Barrera for permission to conduct a block party on Vanhouten Place between DeWitt Avenue and Mortlower Avenue from 6:00 to 11:00, to a national night out on Tuesday, August 4th.
May I motion for approval?
Second. Councilmember Cosmally, Kennedy, Longo, Natori, Robel, Trumel Burke, Mayor Timble.
Who is for introduction?
Ordinance number one for introduction, an ordinance to vacate a portion of Mill Street as shown on. Ordinance number one for introduction. An ordinance to vacate a portion of Mill Street as shown on the tax and assessment map to the township of Bellville immediately adjacent to premise known and designated as lots one, two, three, and four in block three, one, zero, three, and lot one in block three, zero, zero, two on the tax and assessment map to the township of Bellville, Essex County, New Jersey.
Make a motion, move for introduction.
Second.
Quick approval.
Councilmember Cosmally, Kennedy, Longo, Natori, Robel, Trumal Burke, Mayor Kimball. Number two for introduction. An ordinance to amend ordinance number three, 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 create personal positions and adopt new classification and compensation plans.
Make a motion, move for introduction.
Second.
Quick approval.
Councilmember Cosmally, Kennedy, Longo, Natori, Robel, Trumal Burke, Mayor Kimball. Ordinance number three for introduction. An ordinance to amend revised general ordinances of the township of Bellville, chapter eight dash eight designated building zones.
Make a motion, um, move for introduction.
Second.
Quick approval.
Councilmember Cosmally, Kennedy, Longo, Natori, Robel, Trumal Burke, Mayor Kimball.
Make a motion, open up public participation.
Second.
Quick approval.
Councilmember Cosmally, Kennedy, Longo, Natori, Robel, Trumal Burke, Mayor Kimball.
Vic Mafucci, sixty-one Continental. Uh, the, I didn't get a chance to notify the town board today. The post and the stop sign at the corner of Berkeley Avenue and Sia Terrace is down, laying on the ground. And, uh, it's just two short pieces of metal sticking out of the ground.
Oh boy.
I don't know, it's not bent or anything, so I don't know how it came out. Thank you.
Good evening. You know, in regards to your microphone, that young man that spoke, spoke loud and clearly, he looked at the audience. Whether they're working or not, I think I told you before, fourth or fifth grade in school, public speaking, we were taught to speak to the person in the left phone and everybody hear you. Now, back in April, I asked you, where is the budget? It was over two months late. Mr. Esposito said, you're right, we'll have it freed the next meeting. Well, May passed, June passed, we're now in the middle of July. Where is the proposed budget?
The introduced budget, with any luck, will be introduced next week at a special meeting. We are waiting on final pieces of the budget to be completed to have the introduction take place. I'll notify you personally at the table.
Why do we need luck to introduce the budget every department head should be ordered, like I used to do in December, to have it on your desk by January first, the proposed budget? And each department head should be responsible for their own budget, to have it on your desk. And now we're talking in the middle of July with some luck?
I'll strike the word luck. It has nothing to do with luck. There was a vacancy in the office of the treasurer. A new hire took place. Work got caught up.
Okay, we'll see that there. You know, people, I got customers myself too, you know, you own property, you're trying to sign leases or renew leases and all, and we don't know what to do. We don't know what to do. How do you deal with a tenant? The lease is up in February and here we are in July. I don't know what the tax is going to be. And i- it's a burden on people who run businesses that you can't provide us with a, a tax bill on time. And that, with the water leak, you know, Bellville Avenue was paved. I think they finished on Tuesday. On Thursday, we had a water leak on Prospect and all. I keep telling you, and, and you keep telling me you're going to tell, you told Tom Harris to start this water reline project. What takes so long? I don't understand that. We used to get community development, we put it in there.
Money, money. Mr. Franklin Tony, if I could interrupt. The water leak on Bellville Avenue was caused by the milling machine resting on top of the gate valve, causing a crackdown at the lower portion. That was the cause of the, uh, water leak.
And that's exactly what I've said. That's why we got to fix these laterals, we got to fix the mains and all. And I've said it previously, you got a mill, a milling machine coming over those old water lines. Then you got tons and tons of asphalt being laid and big heavy rollers going over it. So unless you fix the infrastructure first, you're wasting our tax dollars that Mr. Kimball just made a reference to on doing these streets. Every, every one of them. I mean, I lost track, I think it's about nine on Home Street. You did that, oh, real nice pavement, they put the mesh down and all that, and boom, couple of months later, they're back again yesterday, uh, no, I'm sorry, today. Fixing another water leak right next to the other two, with, I think it's one sixty-seven or something, where Maroni used to live there, right? The other thing, you know, Billy Gilbert here, I'm going to ask, I don't understand why, if you drive, I happen to drive up Home Street to go home every day, but look at the way we patch them. I have to go in the eastbound lane to go west because the bottom out my, my car. How do we even repair after we do these leaks? You know, we, we, unless, they're called speed bumps. So I don't know where we're going with that. And the other thing is, uh, this on my head is not a yarmulke. I went along my neighbor ladder yesterday, my truck was across the street. I just went down strap to think. Our cherry blossom tree is a whole, I split my head and got six stitches, all right? Uh, my neighbor's tree, which in the past year, we, so many carp and ranch, we got cut down. But about three years before that, I had to trim the branch on that because my oldest son is six foot four. He goes to put the baby in his car and he bangs his forehead and split in there. We're not maintaining these trees. I mean, you can't have branches five, six feet tall on these banks. There's many streets I work on, I can't, I have a truck with ladders on. I can't park on there. I have to go find someplace where there's no trees to park there. But now I wound up with six stitches because, you know, it was that night, he asked me to use my ladder, go to, I'm strapped, boom. So I, can we prune these and get a respectable height? I mean, doorways have to be six foot eight by law. Can we at least get branches to be no more than six foot eight? And today, this goes to what the superintendent Nattari brought up about these property maintenance things. We got a, a real severe problem here. One of the problems is, uh, last year, gentleman gets a summons from the town, I, I noticed that, his garage is dilapidated and it's got to be removed. Guy's a seventy-eight-year-old man living on a fixed income, very small income. He calls me up that night crying, please, the thing's, I'm going to get fined five hundred dollars a day and five hundred every day, you know? I said, good, I'll be down first thing in the morning, don't worry about it. Went down there, get my contract. I come down to the building department, he said, do whatever you got to do. Took me, after three weeks, I started documenting, every, every day, everything went. Took me three months to get a permit, councilman Nattari. After they told the man to lock the garage lock, right? So the, the, in the May, I came here because that day of the town meeting, I went to Lynnhurst to get a roof permit. I was shocked. My wife had called me, somebody else wanted to see me. I just tell them I'll be there an hour, hour and a half. I go in there, come out in seven minutes with a roof permit. Applied for a roof permit in Bellville. Two, three weeks. And, and the ironic thing, my friend had his done on Hornblower Avenue years ago by a contractor I told him not to use. Two months later, the first going, she was come flying off. I go back, he wouldn't respond to my friend, finding one damn builder. I asked the building inspector's bit, why? We don't inspect roofs. So if you don't inspect roofs, why do we have to get a permit? And just this morning, the way home from Hockley, I take my wife to Boomfield Masonry Supply to look at some stones and all that, uh, for a job. And then I says, uh, we're talking about delivery. He says, where to? I said, well, I forget, Bellville. Oh, he says, all right. And he gave me, he said, by the way, if you're doing the job in Bellville, everybody adds money on because of the hassle, they give you, all the contractors add money on. So one of the problems, Mr. Nattari, is we can't get help with the building part. Why did it take me three months after the, the customer was willing, the town gave him a notice, and it takes me three months to get a permit?
Kevin, we'll adjust that, we will adjust that at the meeting, you know, with the, can you call the address? You can call the address? Will you care to disclose the address of that property or should I get it, can I get it from you or leave it to?
Oh, where I tore the garage?
Where did you, where did you lose the garage?
Yes, three something Stevens Street, right opposite Kmart. I'll give you the exact address if you need it, you know? But the, the thing that you know, he was willing to take it down and, uh, he was glad and he kept saying, I'm going, get the permit, I'm going to get a fine, I'm going to get a fine, you know? And it, it's just unbelievable. And, and can we know why it takes so long? I mean, I do roofs in South Orange, walk in and walk out with a permit. Why do we have to wait to get a roof permit, especially when they know? In fact, when the girl asked me, what's the address? I gave the address while I'm filling out the form. She said, don't worry about the bottom, with the address on the computer secret, and she come over me. The thing was, I'll bring it into you, the thing was all computer printout, the taxes, the block, the block number. She said, yeah, just sign here. All right, hold on. She went over there, boom, gave me the L card, here you are. I was shocked. I got out to the truck, looked, I turned the radio, I seen the radio. I said, I don't believe this. Seven minutes to get a roof permit. And there's nothing to, one roof at one time was screaming, yelling at time Gale Chief who was.
Mr. Franklin Tony, want to finish up, please?
This is the last thing. And he comes walking in, she says, you don't come back, it's not ready yet. He says, it's three weeks of roofing. He's reviewing the plans. The guy screamed, what plans? There's no plan. The lady's roof is leaking. I got to fix it. What plans is he reviewing? So please, we, we got to, that I think will correct some of the problems. We can expedite these repairs when people willing to do it.
Thank you.
Michael Sheldon, forty-seven Flood Street. Just a quick update on the status of the website. Uh, to date, we've now had well over a hundred thousand visits to the new website. In fact, on July fourth alone, there were over two thousand visits in that one day. And that doesn't include the, to date, we've had almost twelve thousand five hundred attempts to hack into the website. Most of those hacking efforts have come from a small number of local IP addresses here in New Jersey, but I won't speculate who might, who might be trying to infiltrate the website. I'll leave that to others. Uh, I'm hoping that by the end of this week, to actually roll out a new enhanced version of the township website. It is much more polished, streamlined, it loads a lot faster, and it includes several new features, including the ability for residents to customize what type of messages they wish to receive from the township. Instead of just getting a blanket notification of everything that's posted, they'll be able to specify if they just want messages about the town council or zoning board, messages, planning board, et cetera. So hopefully, the, the new version of the website, including that version two point O, will be well received with a little luck, that'll be running before the end of the weekend. That's it.
George, am I receiving history? Um, with positive note, it was good to see the mayor and the council and the activities that have been going on around town. The neighborhood watch, um, the movie, the outdoor movie, the Fourth of July ceremonies and the raising of the Argentinian flag. Um, it was, uh, good to see the positive activities and uniting of the community in such activities. On another note, um, I've received complaints and pictures, which I can forward perhaps to you, Mike, or to, to, uh, I don't know if there's a mechanism for pictures, if you want to get them to the town council, of the garbage situation on Washington Avenue. Um, and in defense of our D P W, it's not that they don't do their job. It's because people drop garbage, huge bags from commercial businesses in the garbage cans after hours. As they leave their businesses at five or six or seven o'clock at night, they put these huge bags into the receptacles that are on the street and therefore there's no room for passersby to put bottles and cans and smaller parcels. So that is an issue. Um, and I've received pictures and I also myself have, um, experiencing business owners or and/or their employees dropping those bags in the receptacles and therefore leaving, you know, no, no room for anything else. Um, the park bench, benches directly across from town hall, there is no receptacle and more often than not, empty bottles and cans, liquor or non-alcoholic beverages are left there on the benches as well. And that's an eyesore. We have these great new, um, light poles going up, but then you look around and you see the empty receptacles, which, um, detracts from what we're trying to do as far as moving forward. Another resident that lives on, uh, homeowner that lives on New Street complaining about the, um, parking in the vicinity of New Street and Girolliman, that as a result of the multi-unit apartment house that is on Girolliman, there's excessive, I want to say excessive vehicles. And in some cases, they believe that that is a result of overcrowding. And I believe one of those residents may have spoken to you, um, Dr. Nattari. Um, and I know it's kind of hard to prove that there's six people in a two-bedroom apartment or whatever the standards are for a developed municipality in terms of overcrowding. But maybe a letter can be sent or drafted perhaps suggesting or encouraging people to stand by the guidelines, letting them know what the guidelines are. Because if you have six or allegedly, as I was told, nine people in a two-bedroom apartment, you know, and almost everybody has a car, um, that can be a problem. Especially when the cars are parked too close to the curb and now it's a hazard for those people driving, where you can't see past the curb and around the corner. So that's not being enforced on a regular basis as well. And somebody's going to get hurt. Last but not least, and, um, I know that the Board of Ed is a different and autonomous entity from the town council. But at some point, I don't know what, if anything, can be done. But it seems to me that the hiring practices, unsanitary conditions of the school. I have video that shows mice in the cafeteria, non-compliance of policy and procedures in terms of the bullying policy, and lawsuits that just seem to continue. At some point, I don't know if there's a conversation that can be had. I know some municipalities have a combined board, in which case, there's an exchange of information, uh, not a voting, um, uh, entity, but exchange of information that at least one hand knows what the other hand is doing. And that there is a discussion and perhaps they can move forward in a positive manner. Because, not to go backwards, but in terms of moving forward, you have to know where you've come from in order to move forward. You can't log out or plan out a trip and know what you, what you left. Because you may meet it again along the road. And if you're new to the game and you don't know all the players and you don't know the situation, then you're apt to repeat the same mistakes that have been made before. And something needs to be addressed because I don't care how good you have the infrastructure and new, new light poles and activities. Education is key. We're killing our children. We're, we're shutting off opportunities for them and many are falling through the cracks. And if you don't think it's uncorrect, look at the number of scholarship recipients from year to year to year. It's dwindling. It's dwindling. And it's not because everybody's going to a vocational school. We're losing our children. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, many of the seniors have inquired as to why they have not received the farmers market coupons. So I did check into it and I was told that Newark is not giving us coupons this year. Uh, but in other towns, um, Newark, they're getting them, Irvington and others, and we're not. Uh, but that where a couple of places are open and perhaps we could go over there and we could try and, you know, present our identification to see if, um, we qualify to get them. Um, you know, we are Essex County, we pay taxes too, like everybody else. You know, we are Essex County, we pay taxes too, like everybody else. And why are certain towns selected to receive Farmers Market coupons? But we have many people here in Belleville who could use those coupons, otherwise they wouldn't be asking me. And they do help them, even if it's $20 a person. But if you get a husband and wife, you've got $40 there to go to the market and do a little bit of shopping. So I think it's a disgrace that with the county and the things that they do and what they give away in Newark, like what's wrong with Belleville that we can't get Farmers Markets coupons? And I don't know whether the towns can't get them, but there must be others if we can't get them, or just certain towns receiving them. So I just wanted to mention it because I think it's disgraceful that we can't at this time. It's already into the middle of July, nothing's said to us about these coupons or anything. And that's why I just wanted to bring it up, to let you know really how we feel about being left out of this program by Newark. And we're not gonna have our people go into Newark getting coupons to these markets. Most of them don't even drive. They're lucky if they can get to Town Hall, because we're very grateful that we have dialeride here in Belleville, because some people don't have it. And I know one woman, she was offered a senior apartment in Bloomfield, and she turned it down simply because there'd be no dialeride for her to get to her doctor's appointments and so forth. So we appreciate what we have with dialeride here in Belleville. And then to be left out of a Farmers Market program, it is ridiculous and disgraceful really to us people that we're left out of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Rita?
Rita, 42, Nichols Valley. I just wanted to know, the senior ear condition, has it been fixed?
Yes.
So it's all fixed?
Yes.
Yes, it was fixed Friday.
Okay, all right. And I thank you for the firehouse in Silver Lake, that we're hoping that it's gonna be repaired.
Thank you.
Ralph Alon, 60, Belmore Street. Mr. Mayor, council members, council at town manager and secretary in fello residence. Thank you for this opportunity. Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to commend the council on its activities addressing the diversity in our community. As George Anne mentioned, the flag-raising event, which identified the Filipino community and recently, the Argentinian community, has had a positive effect on the diversity in our community, much to the point where several members from my community, the Puerto Rican community, have come forth and were inquiring as to when are we going to be raising the Puerto Rican flag in recognition of the diversity that's within our community. So I'm here to respectfully request, on their behalf, the possibility of the council considering doing a flag-raising event for the Puerto Rican community as well. And we'd be glad to take part and participate and facilitate things in any way possible.
Ralph, definitely we could do that if you could get us like a day that's significant. Yeah, with what day? Has to be remembered by like independence.
Yeah, I know that Florence is saying the Polish flag also.
Yeah, get referred Polish flag.
So I was wondering, we... So I, if the council is willing to it, we were thinking sometime close to the heritage, Hispanic heritage month? Or sometime around there, I think, because it would coincide with activity.
Yes, we can hold on.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you, council.
Jeff Mattingly, 56, Walnut. I was returning a book yesterday. I just want you to know that I keep an eye, I watch the library progress, and it's not going anywhere. It's really slow. The likelihood, I mean, I work construction sites like this, this is not new to me. I see lots of buildings under construction and have to watch the progress on until I can bring my components in. And I truly doubt they're gonna get anywhere near September anything.
Me too.
Yeah, and so I would just like to say, I understand the contractors having other problems with other clientele, things like that, but, you know, where does that leave us in our library? I would caution the council and the library board, which I'll try to do that also, to not pay this contractor any more money until you see plateaus that are certainly commensurate with where they're at. And I did see the window people about a little more than a week ago, have everything pulled open where they're replacing and were mocking up their templates. And that's great news, but the inside is like nowhere, and going nowhere, and dark, and closed off, and they don't want you to see in there. And it is a public project, public money, and I think that we should, you know, as the landlords of the property, be able to keep a careful eye on it and watch the progress within.
The contractor's a disgrace.
Yeah, he is, and I'm afraid that we're gonna get stuck. And it's kind of hard to get blood from a stone. If you end up really getting, you get somebody that's going broke. So, you know, that's where you gotta carefully review your contract and what's built into it or not, and see where you're at. How are we making out with the cable station? I understand, didn't?
I sent a reminder email just the other day.
There was going to be a meeting, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I sent a reminder email just the other day to request visit and a meeting.
Okay, so haven't heard back?
Haven't heard back, I'll send another reminder email tomorrow.
I appreciate that. Okay, yeah, that's it for now.
You know what I understand, the Bell WBHS is our station.
It's under our end, and we have the contract, there's no question about that.
Oh, we should just take the station back.
Well, but you gotta put it somewhere. The portal is there, that's where the cable drops. You gotta drop it where you, you can't walk into the Board of Ed and say, "I want the office." And quite frankly, I mean, really, what is that going to serve us? It's an excellent opportunity for the district, the school system, to have that resource and to, of course, better utilize it.
Please, you're watching, you can't even read what they have on it.
Well, that's the problem. So what you need is leadership there.
You're watching, they record a Board of Education meeting, you can't even hear what people are saying.
Councilman, I'll bring that up at the next Board of Ed meeting. We need some better direction on that, because I think that there's incredible ability to promote both the district and the township with the two different drops. And that there is so much to cover and make available, that it would be an excellent opportunity for us to have both, and for them to be able to advertise the good things that are happening in the district. Mock trials, interviewing, well, you have to have leadership. I appreciate the, I mean, that's where we're at, right? It's a big year over there, right? We're gonna see lots of changes, so keep you posted. Appreciate the comment, thank you.
Pamela Fleisch, 132 Franklin Street, Belleville. What Mr. Mattingly was saying about the cable station, as Councilman Kennedy just said, they have the station. I went to Belleville High School, one or two years ago, that's all I'm saying. Just one or two, no laughing. Now, I know, Mr. Mayor, we've had this discussion briefly. I know I'm not losing my mind. I know we came down here when Ms. McCabe was running it. I know we came down here to film, for the simple fact, the reason is very quickly, my birthday is in February. And she was all excited, because there were like two or three of us that were 18 at the time. Because we couldn't come down when we were 17, because you had to get the parents' permission, blah, blah, blah. 18, we could come out. I know we filmed it. And I know Mr. Malone, as the Board of Education, you know, and he's a personal friend of ours, you know. I know the town council and the, you know, Board of Education can work nicely together and should be working nicely together for the good of this town. I think that these meetings should be filmed. I believe the Board of Education meetings can be, should be filmed. Because even if we had this room filled to capacity, okay? This is what, maybe 20 more people can fit in this room? 25 more people can fit in this room? That's a small snapperel of the township of Belleville, okay? If you want true change, you have to start and let it come freely, okay? I think it is imperative that you all work together with the Board of Education, with Comcast, Verizon, whoever, to get this done. Thank you.
Thank you. And this room holds 120 people.
Well, there you go.
Just real quick, Pamela.
Yes.
You can videotape anywhere, right? What we're looking for too is the possibility of putting a drop here, where we could broadcast right out to...
Right.
That's what we're requesting.
Right.
But you're right, we can videotape.
And like I said, I can, you know, worry. And that's fine, but, you know, that's one way of, he gets on the Belleville forum and things like that, and that's fine. We have a cable station, use it. And Councilman is right, on some of the things you can't read, that does need to be addressed. The fonts and things like that.
Yeah, always say, use your channel, they black it out, you can...
Yeah, no, yeah.
Thank you.
Make a motion, call the public here?
Second.
Councilmember Cosrelli?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Longo?
Yes.
Nattari?
Yes.
Robell?
Yes.
Schumelberg?
Yes.
Mayor Kimball?
Make a motion, move the consent agenda?
Second.
Can I have a phone number?
Number seven?
What quarter of the law to consent agenda?
Ken, that was Cosrelli?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Longo?
Yes.
Nattari?
Yes.
Robell?
Yes.
Schumelberg?
Yes.
Mayor Kimball?
Make a motion, move number seven?
Second.
Why am I, I think we should postpone this resolution, because what I see, they're using our property, it's within 200 feet of a school, and the law says you can't be, now I'm trying, I passed out a Google map that shows, it's right on the edge of number seven school. If they take that eight feet, it will go into the law on the number seven. I know there's a survey done on Google, but I asked for a survey of the building so we could determine the exact location and how many feet from the school. As of yet, I didn't receive that. And as far as I'm concerned, they are within 200 feet of the school. Now, I called the ABC today, tried to talk to one of their attorneys, he never got back to me. In my old days as law enforcement officer, what I learned that if you're arrested for selling drugs or using drugs within 200 feet of a school, it's, it don't have to be, it's not the entrance. As soon as you touch that school proper, you're in violation. So can we get more information on this? I just can't be for this, so I'm asking the postponement. Do we get tables, do we get the correct information on it?
Make a motion, table it down.
There's another issue here with regard to this.
Make a motion to table, you can't talk.
Well, you know, because it's gotta go forward, it's gotta move forward. The issue is, is, are the alcoholic beverages gonna be served on township property? Where is the property line? Because if, if the building is built out to the property line, then the request to move, to do a place-to-place transfer is from the back of the building to the front of the building, which may be township property. I don't know, I thought this was gonna be resolved by a, by a survey, which I don't think we got.
I have another question too. How do other towns do it? Go to any town, Hoboken, Mont...
Say that again, Deputy Mayor, please.
How do other towns do it?
Well, they within 200 feet of the school.
Oh, sure. Yeah, but if we, if we say that, you know, they have to be back 200 feet from the school, and make that a...
It's the law, it's not us, it's the law.
No, but I mean, if we say we approve this based upon them being, you know, back 200 feet, then they have to comply.
I gotta tell you, my concern with this now is, are those tables on Belleville's sidewalk? Yes or no? The only thing that's gonna tell us that is a survey, not a Google survey. And what's going to happen, if the tables are on township property and something happens there, that's the township's problem. And there's almost no way to wiggle through that one. If on the other hand, it's the owner's property, that's different, then you have something to discuss.
So do we need a hall of...
I thought we were gonna get, I thought we were gonna get a survey with this.
Do we need a hall of parlors and an insurance certificate?
Well, you know something, Deputy Mayor? Hall of parlorses can only go so far, because first of all, you can never, you can never contractually get yourself out of a personal injury situation by passing it over to another entity or person. You can't contract your way out of that. So even if the licensee were to give us those things, we would still get sued.
Yeah, theoretically, anybody can sue for anything, so...
That's the way to ride that.
Now, I thought that this was gonna, you know, all these issues were going to be addressed, and they haven't been. It's a simple matter, get a survey, where's the property line end? Where does, you know, where does it go?
Through the chair. It had to be public. So I made some questions, how do you go to Hoboken and Montclair and every single restaurant?
Say again.
How do you go to Hoboken and Montclair and every single restaurant has outdoors seating and drinking?
I don't know what...
I mean, we're not reinventing the wheel here, I mean, this is...
I don't know what Hobokens, you know, whether or not the shop owners own the sidewalks or not. Now, what we do know about is the shop owner is charged with the responsibility of maintaining it, shoveling snow, and on and on.
Where are you telling me nothing?
And I'm gonna take a guess, but in Hoboken, there's probably some kind of an ordinance that permits the al fresco in certain areas.
There's tuition here, right?
They're not on the sidewalk.
We're talking about tuition. Issue number one is being on town property. Issue number two...
Is the 200.
Is the 200. So that's what we get, you know, once we resolve the 200 and, I mean, every other town, I'm assuming a lot of the towns, it's on town property, so there's gotta be a way to resolve that. If we can find a way to keep it, you know, 200, back 200 feet, then we should be okay.
Can I ask a question, please?
Go ahead.
You know, that'd be, that'd be kind of a vote.
Why is it okay to get a special permit 25 times a year or whatever it is for events where you can do it, but this is different?
Because that's what the ABC law is, that's the easy, that's the answer. That's what the ABC law provides for, you know, I...
Because it would seem to me if you're allowed to do it periodically, you would have permitted, what's the difference?
First of all, in my view, if we're talking about serving alcoholic beverages, I don't think that the governing body is going to approve any business 75 times a year to serve alcohol on town property. I don't know. That's something that's within the purview of the clerk and the governing body. I think this is a matter of...
What I'm gonna do is I'm gonna make a motion to table. Do we get the...
I made the motion. And I made the motion before everybody started talking.
I'll second the court's rule.
Councilmember Cosrelli?
Yeah.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Longo?
No.
Nattari?
Yes.
Robell?
Yes.
Schumelberg?
No.
Mayor Kimball?
Yes.
Now, what I'm looking for, we have to get a survey of this property.
Yes, sir.
Okay? And then we have to determine...
Designate where it can be, where it can be.
Right, if it's the town property, if the sidewalk is the town property, are we gonna allow them to sell alcohol on the town property? That's the two questions.
Which is fine, but no one informed about that.
Why didn't we do this before?
I asked for a survey at the last meeting. And I got a Google map.
Well, the Google map was just to prove that it was, how the law was written was that it has to be within...
Door to door.
Door to door.
293 feet.
Which was what he did, and it's 300, over 300.
I don't know if that's the law.
That's the law, I read it with the clerk.
I'm reading it too, but I don't know whether it's, it's the edge of the grass that starts the entrance to that school. If that's the case, then he can't get it, which is...
The ABC laws, the library, it says from the closest door, it's door to door.
I called the ABC today to try to talk to an attorney, he never got back. And I'm just going back to, when it was a police officer, if you're arrested within 200 feet of the school zone, it don't have to be the door to school, it's the beginning of that school. And that's, I wanna make sure that's not the case here. I can't let you speak anymore, I'm sorry.
I think a survey really solves the, solves this next time out. And it's not a tremendously big deal to get. It's a place-to-place transfer, there's some questions that have been raised, you know... know...
I don't know if we make this decision, but until that, until that is solved, I don't think they should be getting more drinking out there, or that, that problem is solved.
Well, the place-to-place has not been approved, period.
Okay. Okay. Of course, I, can we, to your consent agenda?
Yes, you do.
Okay, new business?
Yes.
I got three resolutions, one resolution is, congratulations to Christopher and Jane Durkin for being honored by the Bellev Democratic County Committee by Calypso Night, move it.
Second.
Councilmember Cosrally?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Longo?
Yes.
Nattari?
Yes.
Robell?
Yes.
Schumelberg?
Yes.
Mayor Campbell?
Yes. Third resolution is, congratulations to Sebastian Poppa Junior on the celebration of his zanyth birthday.
Second.
Second.
Quick call of all.
Councilmember Cosrally?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Longo?
Yes.
Nattari?
Yes.
Robell?
Yes.
Schumelberg?
Yes.
Mayor Campbell?
That's all the new business, rather.
I just have one thing. Uh, Kevin, Mr. Sezino, on Route 21, I'm getting a lot of, a lot of calls, it's, it's just a wreck there, I mean weeds and bottles and cans, and this is, uh, on the entrance of Little Street. Now, whose property is it? Is it the state, is it the county, or can we write a letter to the state, please, so we can start cleaning it up? Thank you. That's it.
Just real quick, um, this is the seventieth anniversary of V E and V J Day, okay? Um, Belleville has a very important person who's going to be ninety-four years old on July twenty-third. He is a Guadalcanal Marine, his name is Ziggy Gassavage. So I just want you guys to remember him, uh, remember all these guys that fought for us. He, he actually came back from Guadalcanal and replaced John Basilone with selling war bonds, so, and Ziggy's lived in Belleville most of his life, and his son actually went to Belleville High School, so let's wish him a happy birthday, pray for him. Thank you.
You got a ninety-seven-year-old guy named Joe Selfall still alive, who's on the invasion of...
Yeah, he's info, we'll, we'll, you know, we should do a resolution for him. We did a resolution for Ziggy last year, and he and his son, so I just want to remember him again.
Move it, adjutant. Make a motion.